Good afternoon, once again. And back in session, kind of a stop-start afternoon. So we'll have to call the roll once again. Probably set a record before we're done today.
My apologies. Supervisor Frost?
Here, Kennedy.
Still here.
Peters?
I'm with him.
Serna?
I'm here.
Natoli?
Still here after all these years.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, go ahead and call the next item. And I know we've got others in the audience. I'll recognize just a moment, but go ahead and call the item.
Item 53, Office of Inspector General Presentation for the Annual Report 2016.
Okay. I want to welcome Rick, our Inspector General, today to give us an overview and summary of his annual report. And thank Rick for being here. I know we'd had this previously on this early in the summer, and it got continued because we had one of those days. It was more than stop-start. It was just, it was a full calendar. But also note that we have Under Sheriff Eric Magnus here. And we have a speaker who has been very patient likewise, who wishes to address the board. And at the end of Rick's presentation, and any questions the board has, I'm going to invite Bruce Fischke to come forward. And I'll allow him 10 minutes to make a presentation. And certainly Rick will be available if there's questions that come out of the presentation by Mr. Fischke, who's also circulated information to the board. So we should have Rick's report and a report as well as Mr. Fischke's information, which was forwarded to the board earlier this morning. So with that, welcome Rick. And again, we appreciate you being here and are interested in hearing from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, I'm Rick Brazil. I'm your Inspector General. This is a summary of the 2016 annual report for the Inspector General. It's the first report that's been done in years because we hadn't had an Inspector General for years along the way. So there are four key areas I'd like to touch on that are in the report versus process. Notable incidents that we looked into, deaths in custody and some officer-involved shootings. Those four theme areas resulted in 27 recommendations to the Sheriff's Department. Of those 27, five were completed during the year, 21 are in progress, and one was new in the annual report. That was at that time. There's been additional recommendations that have been completed. The Sheriff's Department continues to work on those. So that number has gone up along the way. With process review, one of the first things, one of the first tasks we had is reviewing how accessible is it for the community to make complaints about behavior of employees of the Sheriff's Department? Or in this case, or commend them? It was discovered very early on that the only way to truly make a complaint against a sheriff's deputy or to commend them was to fill out a form that had a lot of confidential information in it and either hand-deliver it or carry it in. Not very accessible. So working with the Department of Technology, they've been just amazing in helping through the process in the Sheriff's Department, the theme was no one should complain about the ability to make a complaint. So we redesigned the web, the Internet, or Internet interface to where a community member can go to the county's website, type in Inspector General, find a form they can fill out, and just hit Submit. They can do a fillable PDF if they choose. They can hand-carry it, mail it, email it, drop it off, in person, on the phone. We'll take complaints on napkins if they choose. The Sheriff's Department also reviewed their processes and did the same thing. To where now the community can make complaints through their website, through fillable forms, or in person. And they removed all the confidential information. What we also did was added a feature where previously you couldn't make a complaint unless you gave your name, some identifying information, and signed the form. Now you can make a complaint anonymously. So there really is no reason for someone to complain about the ability to make a complaint. And we've made it very simple and very easy for folks to do that. Additionally, in working with the Sheriff's Department, we reviewed the tracking systems. How when complaints come in, are they tracked through a process to conclusion? And we identified that there were multiple databases being used, and it wasn't an efficient system. In fact, it was such, there were so many databases that I'm convinced that the number of complaints coming in weren't accurately being tabulated, and they were probably high. So the numbers actually coming in, I think, were over-reported versus reported accurately at the Sheriff's Department. Working with the sheriff's staff and their professional standards division, and with the software vendor that provides the software, Thrive Pro, we've streamlined that process. And we're now comfortable that 2016 numbers and beyond will be accurate, and that we won't lose anything along the way. So some tremendous improvements with the sheriff in that regard. What I'd like now is to kind of walk you through very quickly kind of what the result has been. So if we look at the left, you'll see methods, complaints, or commendations are received. These are to the Inspector General's office, not to the sheriff. We'll look at those in a moment. In 2016, there were 135 items received. Four of those 135 were commendations. So that left 131 complaints. The vast majority of the complaints coming in were off the web, 64 percent. The next largest category would be, and it's not on yours, but it would be in the phone. And then we kind of go down from there. So it's really either the Internet, through the web, or by telephone. Of those 131 complaints that were received in the Inspector General's office, 52 percent actually went to the Sheriff's Internal Affairs. So it's just slightly more than half. The next largest category was 30 percent to other agencies. A lot of folks, when they just search for Inspector General, Sacramento County pops up. So we have a tremendous number of CDCR complaints that I end up referring over to CDCR, to their ombudsman, to other agencies, or even other departments within the county. So there's a significant number. That number's dropping, declining, as we kind of educate folks on who to complain to. But the majority of complaints I got out of that number that referred were to CDCR. And I actually put the complainant in direct contact with the ombudsman assigned to that prisoner, that facility.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, Mr. Inspector General. Maybe I'm missing something on the high chart on the right. But the two largest wedges there, I don't see any percentage assigned to them.
Yeah, and I don't know why that happened.
Yeah, you know, handout and printed one is on there, but it's not on the slide.
I don't know what happened in transition between the softwares, apparently. So for reference for those looking at, if you look at the dark blue to the right, that would be referred to SSD. That would be referred to the Sheriff's Department, and that's 52 percent. The more medium color blue, that would be referred to other agencies, and that's 30 percent.
Good. I think it's also important to clarify that because you might have people watching too that don't have the hard copy.
So I'll make sure I look up, and if I see a gap in the data there, to fill it in for those that are watching.
Good point, though, because it says category name percentage, and it actually shows up on the printer one of that one. So good.
And we'll make sure that they, for reference also to those that are viewing, all of the charts that you see and the data you see are available in the report online. And it's, I'll get the email address at the end, or the website address. But if folks just went to SACCounty.net, just type in Inspector General, it'll take you to that website with all the reports and all the data that are there. So of the 131 complaints, 68 of them actually referred over to the Sheriff's Department. And within those 68, these are areas that I classify them in when I send them over. The two largest numbers, as you can see on the screen, those numbers did pop up, are service and conduct. Service would be where a community member felt that the sheriff's deputy or the Sheriff's Department wasn't providing the services they expected. I wanted a report, they didn't take one. I expected something to happen, that didn't happen. In some cases, that's a policy, that the sheriff may not do that. In other cases, it was a complaint the deputy didn't fulfill their obligations. Conduct unbecoming is what most people would see, that the deputy did not behave or the employee did not behave in a professional manner. Those are kind of classifications. Those are the two largest categories of the complaints that were received at the Inspector General's office. Of the 68 that are sent over to the sheriff, the Sheriff's Department, and I will fill in all of those. The upper-left category that you see on your screen, which is the dark blue, are the community-initiated complaints to the Inspector General. That is 22 percent of the sheriff's workload. So they receive a total of 312 complaints to their Internal Affairs. Of those 312, 22 percent are generated by the Inspector General. The orange would be those that are initiated by the Sheriff's Department. And those are 17 percent are initiated, actually internally, that they recognize that there's an issue. The bottom chart, the medium blue, are those that the community initiates and contacts the Sheriff's Department. So that's 61 percent. So I wanted to, when we looked at this, wanted to look at how much of a workload is the Inspector General's office creating for the Sheriff's Department? It's 22 percent of their work.
Rick, can you give me an example? Give us an example of a department-initiated complaint?
Sure. It would be insubordination. Deputy was told to do something that was insubordinate. Deputy may have witnessed misconduct of another deputy in his reporting it. Or supervisor took action against a deputy for dereliction of duty. And we'll get kind of in the categories on the next slide. But most of your internal complaints you're going to see are going to be related to performance issues, driving issues, accidents, or another employee seeing another deputy or another employee doing something that's out of policy.
And how many of those are rightfully more placed through Internal Affairs?
They're all captured in Internal Affairs in the software. So what we worked with Internal Affairs to do is any complaint, whether it's internal, external, is actually given a case number. And then whether, the disposition may change, but at least it gives an example of we're tracking it through the system. And so you can get an accurate reflection of basically the workload of Internal Affairs is capturing the information and then sending it out. Most of the complaints received, either through the Inspector General directly from the community or internally, most of those are handled within the Work Division. So it may be sent out, it's reviewed, but it comes back to Internal Affairs for their review and their analysis. And that is typical of most agencies, particularly those of this size. Most of the cases are sent out to the workplace to be investigated, then taken back, sent back to Internal Affairs. And this one, all the numbers are there. So of the 312, so now we're just, we're talking about sheriff's complaints, 312 in 2016. There are 37 pending. So if you total up all the numbers, you'd come up with 275 because we don't know what the final disposition is of those 37. So it's 275 that we're looking at. The orange are department-initiated complaints. The blue are community-initiated complaints. So when you, when you look at the chart, the biggest categories from the community, over 53 percent, have to do with misconduct or discourtesy, which is what you typically would see in a law enforcement agency. The majority of complaints from the public are surrounding themselves around discourtesy or misconduct. In this case, you see the orange are initiated within the Sheriff's Department. That again is not uncommon for conduct unbecoming. Someone witnesses a deputy doing something that's just not at the standard that they expect. That would be a conduct unbecoming. You'll get some where they witnessed discourtesy, and then you get neglected duty. They're just not doing what they should do, so they started, they initiate a complaint within the Sheriff's Department. So these are all within the norms of what you would see of an agency this size.
Rick, just a quick question. So on the neglect of duty, on the previous chart, your OIG complaints that you forward to SSD, you had eight neglect of duty. So is that eight a subset of the 34 that shows here?
Yeah, the neglect of duty, so if you go to the blue, the community 24, that eight is a subset of the 24. So I, the Inspector General received eight. The balance was received from the community directly to Internal Affairs.
Okay, thanks.
Or carry it in, not very accessible. So, working with the Department of Technology, they've been just amazing in helping through the process and the Sheriff's Department. The theme was, no one should complain about the ability to make a complaint. So, we redesigned the web, the Internet, our Internet interface, to where a community member can go to the county's website, type in Inspector General, find a form they can fill out, and just hit submit. They can do a fillable PDF if they choose, they can hand carry it, mail it, email it, drop it off, in person, on the phone, we'll take complaints on napkins if they choose. The Sheriff's Department also reviewed their processes and did the same thing, to where now the community can make complaints through their website, through fillable forms, or in person, and they removed all the confidential information. What we also did was added a feature where previously you couldn't make a complaint unless you gave your name, some identifying information, and signed the form. Now you can make a complaint anonymously. So, there really is no reason for someone to complain about the ability to make a complaint, and we've made it very simple and very easy for folks to do that. Additionally, in working with the Sheriff's Department, we reviewed the tracking systems, how when complaints come in, are they tracked through a process to conclusion? And we identified that there were multiple databases being used, and it wasn't an efficient system. In fact, it was such, there were so many databases that I'm convinced that the number of complaints coming in weren't accurately being tabulated, and they're probably high. So, the numbers actually coming in, I think, were over-reported versus reported accurately at the Sheriff's Department. Working with the Sheriff's staff and their professional standards division, and with the software vendor that provides the software, Threia Pro, we've streamlined that process, and we're now comfortable that 2016 numbers and beyond will be accurate, and that we won't lose anything along the way. So, some tremendous improvements with the Sheriff in that regard. What I'd like now is to kind of walk you through, very quickly, kind of what the result has been. So, if we look at the left, you'll see methods, complaints, or commendations are received. These are to the Inspector General's office, not to the Sheriff, we'll look at those in a moment. In 2016, there were 135 items received, four of those 135 were commendations, so that left 131 complaints. The vast majority of the complaints coming in were off the web, 64 percent. The next largest category would be, and it's not on yours, but it would be in the phone, and then we kind of go down from there. So, it's really either the Internet, through the web, or by telephone. Of those 131 complaints that were received in the Inspector General's office, 52 percent actually went to the Sheriff's Internal Affairs. So, it's just slightly more than half. The next largest category was 30 percent to other agencies. A lot of folks, when they just search for Inspector General, Sacramento County pops up. So, we have a tremendous number of CDCR complaints that I end up referring over to CDCR, to their ombudsman, to other agencies, or even other departments within the county. So, there's a significant number, that number's dropping, declining, as we kind of educate folks on who to complain to, but the majority of complaints I got out of that number that referred were to CDCR, and I actually put the complainant in direct contact with the ombudsman assigned to that prison or that facility.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, Mr. Inspector General, maybe I'm missing something on the, I chart on the right, but the two largest wedges there, I don't see any percentage assigned to them.
Yeah, and I don't know why that happened.
Yeah, I hand out it, and the printed one is on there, but it's not on the slide.
Okay.
I don't know what happened in transition between the softwares, apparently. So, for reference for those looking at, if you look at the dark blue to the right, that would be referred to SSD, that would be referred to the Sheriff's Department, and that's 52 percent. The more medium color blue, that would be referred to other agencies, and that's 30 percent.
Good. I think it's also important to clarify that, because you might have people watching too that don't have the hard copy.
So, I'll make sure I look up, and if I see a gap in the data there, to fill it in for those that are watching.
Good point, though, because it says, it just says category name percentage, and it actually shows up on the printed one of that one, so, good.
And we'll make sure that they, for reference also to those that are viewing, all of the charts that you see and the data you see are available in the report online, and it's, I'll get the email address at the end, or the website address, but if folks just went to saccounty.net, just type in Inspector General, it'll take you to that website with all the reports and all the data that are there. So, of the 131 complaints, 68 of them actually referred over to the Sheriff's Department. And within those 68, these are areas that I classify them in when I send them over. The two largest numbers, as you can see on the screen, those numbers did pop up, are service and conduct. Service would be where a community member felt that the sheriff's deputy or the sheriff's department wasn't providing the services they expected. I wanted a report, they didn't take one, I expected something that happened, that didn't happen. In some cases, that's a policy, that the sheriff may not do that, in other cases, it was a complaint the deputy didn't fulfill their obligations. Conduct unbecoming is what most people would see, that the deputy did not behave, or the employee did not behave in a professional manner. Those are kind of classifications, those are the two largest categories of the complaints that were received at the Inspector General's office. Of the 68 that are sent over to the Sheriff, the Sheriff's Department, and I will fill in all of those, the upper-left category that you see on your screen, which is the dark blue, are the community-initiated complaints to the Inspector General. That is 22 percent of the sheriff's workload. So, they receive a total of 312 complaints to their Internal Affairs. Of those 312, 22 percent are generated by the Inspector General. The orange would be those that are initiated by the Sheriff's Department, and those are 17 percent are initiated, actually internally, that they recognize that there's an issue. The bottom chart, the medium blue, are those that the community initiates and contacts the Sheriff's Department, so that's 61 percent. So, I wanted to, when we looked at this, wanted to look at, how much of a workload is the Inspector General's office creating for the Sheriff's Department, is 22 percent of their work?
Rick, can you give me an example, give us an example of a department-initiated complaint?
Sure, it would be insubordination, deputy was told to do something, it was insubordinate, deputy may have witnessed misconduct of another deputy in his reporting it, or supervisor took action against a deputy for dereliction of duty, or, and we'll get kind of in the categories on the next slide, but most of your internal complaints you're going to see are going to be related to performance issues, driving issues, accidents, or another employee seeing another deputy or another employee doing something that's out of policy.
And how many of those are rightfully more placed through Internal Affairs?
They're all captured in Internal Affairs in the software. So, what we worked with Internal Affairs to do is, any complaint, whether it's internal, external, is actually given a case number, and then whether, the disposition may change, but at least it gives an example of we're tracking it through the system, and so you can get an accurate reflection of basically the workload of Internal Affairs is capturing the information, and then sending it out. Most of the complaints received, either through the Inspector General, directly from the community, or internally, most of those are handled within the Work Division. So, it may be sent out, it's reviewed, but it comes back to Internal Affairs for their review and their analysis. And that is typical of most agencies, particularly those of this size. Most of the cases are sent out to the workplace to be investigated, then taken, sent back to Internal Affairs. And this one, all the numbers are there. So, of the 312, so now we're just, we're talking about sheriff's complaints, 312 in 2016, there are 37 pending. So, if you total up all the numbers, you'd come up with 275, because we don't know what the final disposition is of those 37. So, it's 275 that we're looking at. The orange are department-initiated complaints, the blue are community-initiated complaints. So, when you look at the chart, the biggest categories from the community, over 53 percent, have to do with misconduct or discourtesy, which is what you typically would see in a law enforcement agency. The majority of complaints from the public are surround themselves around discourtesy or misconduct. In this case, you see the orange are initiated within the Sheriff's Department, that again is not uncommon for conduct unbecoming, someone witnesses a deputy doing something that's just not at the standard that they expect, that would be a conduct unbecoming. You'll get some where they witnessed discourtesy, and then you get neglected duty, they're just not doing what they should do, so they started, they initiate a complaint within the Sheriff's Department. So, these are all within the norms of what you would see of an agency this size.
Rick, just a quick question, so on the neglect of duty, on the previous chart, your OIG complaints that you forward to SSD, you had eight neglect of duty, so is that eight a subset of the 34 that shows here?
Yeah, the neglect of duty, so if you go to the blue, the community 24, that eight is a subset of the 24. So, the Inspector General received eight, the balance was received from the community directly to Internal Affairs.
Okay, thanks.
None of the orange resulted from the Inspector General, there's no internal complaint that we initiated, that we saw that occurred. So, this is a summation of both mine and what the Sheriff's Department looked at. So, now we have, of the 312, ones that have been resolved, there's 275. These are the findings within the investigation, and again, we broke them down by community and department findings. What was concerning is, when you look in the unfounded category, the unfounded category basically says that the person made a complaint, and the complaint is totally untrue, or the event that the person is making a complaint never happened. So, it's basically a lie. That number, 150, is extremely high, it's 62 percent of all complaints. I believe that's just, it's a systems issue in the Sheriff's Department, and not understanding the difference between exonerated and unfounded, and it may also be that a lot of the complaints are resolved at a sergeant's level, where the someone complains, the sergeant's able to mitigate it either in the field or through phone calls, they reclassify it in a way that I think that it's a coding issue when it gets coded in there. So, one of the recommendations is Sheriff's Department will review their processes to make sure that the finding is the accurate finding along the way, and I think it's more of a coding issue than anything else, but the unfounded complaints at 62 percent is extremely high. I think you'll see, through an audit, would be my guess, you'll see a lot more going to the exonerated. Yes, it did happen, but the deputy was with him, policy did nothing wrong. Right now, they're saying it's unfounded, because the deputy did nothing wrong, when in fact, it should be exonerated.
What about sustained? So, what happens, you've got 29 cases, 23 from the department, and six from the community, so what does that entail? What's the follow-on to that?
Sustained, and that is also where, when we look at the unfounded category, where a sergeant, I'm just using broad examples, the sergeant in the field is able to mitigate it in the field, where what the complainant complained about did occur, they realized that just talking to the deputy is sufficient for the complainant, that actually is a sustained complaint. It's handled informally, nothing happens on it, but really, it happened, the deputy was in error, it was corrected. I believe now what they're doing is reclassifying, it's miscellaneous, and it's being interpurposely categorized into the unfounded category. So, again, it's a coding issue, they're not doing anything wrong at the other end, the actual action end of it, it's just how it's coded in the software system. Sustained cases, you will see in agencies, a high percentage of sustained cases within internally-generated complaints, because most of them are either initiated because of a fact pattern of crashes, or somebody witnesses misconduct, so those tend to be on the high end of sustained, because somebody witnessed the behavior, and it did actually occur, and they're taking action on it. So, you're going to see a higher number of percentages of sustained within internal complaints.
So, there's no category for founded?
That would be sustained.
That is sustained.
That's sustained, sustained and founded are the same. So, I can walk through this real quick. Unfounded means that nothing, it's just not factually anywhere close to being accurate along the way. Exonerated means that the person making the complaint, they did make a complaint, but the deputy's actions were appropriate. Not sustained is one of those, can't prove either way, you can't prove what the deputy says happened, or what the community member happened with any certainty, you're kind of a, can't figure out which way it happened. Sustained means it did happen, and then the Sheriff's Department takes appropriate action, depending on what the complaint is. And miscellaneous are cases that came in that don't fit in any category, that really weren't involving, it's more of service-type stuff, and/or the cases are still outstanding, and they haven't figured them out yet.
And do you, so these are based upon your review, or this is the department's review and determination that you're showing in this chart?
Great question. This is the department's review. What I do, the complaints coming back, and now that the 16 complaints are coming back to me now, what I do is, I keep my own record, bookkeeping, so to speak, record-keeping, I review their dispositions, and I either concur, do not concur, or I've sent them back for review. There were several, particularly early on, where I didn't believe the disposition or handling case was appropriate, and it's more of a, kind of like a medi, I won't call, it's not really formally mediation, but I would go back to the undersheriff or the former undersheriff and say, hey, I don't think we handled this quite right, they'll review it, look at it, and then maybe make modifications to it, so I kind of work through there, but I get all the dispositions of the cases that were generated out of the Inspector General's office, I review those, and then categorize them, concur, not concur, or additional investigation required.
So, is there, I don't think it's in your charts unless you added one, but so is there a chart that would be concurrent with this, that would then, just what you said, would show either concur, don't concur, or re-refer? For all the cases that are in this chart, then you would have a matching one that would reflect in three categories, depending upon the nature of what those are there, I guess if it was completely unfounded, then if you agree with that, but for those other ones, so do you have, you keep your separate accounting, is there a separate chart for that, Rick?
There is not now, when we were producing this report, the dataset wasn't large enough, because they were finishing up theirs, and so, we didn't have a complete, because there's a delay in everything we do. So, the end of the year, 16 reports, they don't get done until 17, then I don't get them until midway through 17, but I can go back and produce that for you.
No, yeah, I'm not even asking, I just was curious, because as you were talking, I'm getting the vision of then how you then categorize them, and kind of put the concluding period on that, and/or an ellipsis carries it on, because it goes back for more reviews, so.
Correct. The ones where there's, I think there's significance of the disagreement, or there's strong disagreements, I generally go to Internal Affairs folks, and/or the undersheriff, and say, hey, we should chat about that, chat about where we're at on this one.
And just one other question, I know that this involves, you know, a good body of work, so if they are, say, come from the community or the department, and they're unfounded, is there any follow-on to say, you know, you complained, but there was no foundation to this, or somebody fabricated something, obviously, they knew they did, and they did it, may not admit to it, or is this exoneration? So, is there some sort of a paper reference that may not be in every case, but just describe, I think, so again, as you present this to the public, what that, you know, work ends up as far as any sort of conclusion on paper or in writing, so.
No, perfect. What ends up happening is, after the complaint works its way through the investigative process, it has been reviewed inside the Sheriff's Department, then the individual, individuals making the complaint are sent a final disposition letter, and the final disposition letter lets the complainant know, this is what we've talked about, this is the interaction we've had, and in most cases, not all, but in most cases, a sheriff supervisor has talked to the complainant on the phone, and they, it's not a surprise, the letter that's the follow-up. So, there has been some phone conversation between a supervisor in the Sheriff's Department and the person making the complaint, and in some cases, there's been conversations between myself and the person making the complaint.
Okay, thanks.
So, I'm going to move on to notable incidents, if I may.
Sure, you bet.
There were four notable incidents that resulted in some changes to policy. One of them was not a complaint, it was something that got people's attention on a social media post, it involved, it was an incident at the Family Relations Court. That resulted in the Sheriff's Department working with court staff to identify different holding areas, to separate juveniles from adults, and it was very responsive of the Sheriff's Department, in fact, they had done a lot before I ever contacted them. There is one complaint that Mr. Fritchie will discuss later, it was the serving of civil papers. For those that were here on the Board of Supervisors at the time, he presented in open session last August, not this August, 2015, and then that was, then there was a request from the Chair Supervisor McGlashan that a follow-up be done, and that email was sent out to the Board of Supervisors at the time, and that memo has also been sent back out to you for reference, and I'll let Mr. Fritchie talk to you after this, he'll make it easier on that. And then the last, there was a couple incidents where it was, became very clear to both the Sheriff's staff and myself, particularly those working in homicide, that there's times that it's appropriate that I get involved in a critical incident earlier, to be the liaison between the family of a decedent and the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department's got an investigation due to conduct, but there's times where me getting involved early on is a little bit easier to give them the information, the facts as I know them, to kind of help dissuade rumors, as we know, those happen. And in one of those cases, it was requested Supervisor Kennedy, and another one was at the request of the Sheriff's Department, that we're starting to see that happen more and more.
Okay.
Also involve shootings, some significant policy recommendations, and/or hardware recommendations around the value of video and audio. What I might also mention is, in officer-involved shootings, once I get a preliminary idea of what's involved in the shooting, then we will have a meeting with county council, risk management, the Sheriff's Department, and the county execs' office, kind of discussing liability issues, or any immediate concerns that need to be addressed quickly, rather than waiting for a formal review to be completed. That process has changed. And you'll see in the recommendations that there are some recommendations on expanding the weapons types that the Sheriff's Department has, on the less lethal side, expanding the availability of those out into the field with the potential to reduce officer-involved shootings, and there's significant policy revisions and review and training within the recommendations. Again, those recommendations are online, and multiple reports within the Inspector General's website.
Rick, the last slide had, you had one procedural issue, a death in custody relative to swallow a contraband, if you could just touch on that.
I skipped over that one. There were, of the deaths in custody I reviewed, there were two. One was someone in custody who actually died in the, before they were booked, that was investigated by the Sacramento Police Department, that person had ingested narcotics and died of cocaine intoxication. The second one was someone who the Sacramento Police Department had booked, had been placed into a cell inside the facility, he had swallowed something before he was admitted into the jail, SAC PD thought they were able to remove all the items out of his mouth, he went through the booking process, the recommendation on there is that when there's any suspicion, the recommended Sheriff's Department is to review their policies in coordination with the medical staff, that if there's any indication that a individual being booked in the jail may have swallowed something, that they review their monitoring protocols to ensure that that person is monitored more frequently than just a typical inmate, for the potential that they may have actually swallowed something, and it just wasn't perceived, but actually happened. So, it's more of a preventive piece than others. We've all that one, sorry, I skipped too fast. So, some of the future work that's out there. The Sheriff's Department has not been tracking all types of use of force, and that's important that you do, so you can evaluate not just what's going on in the field, but are you effective in the types of use of force you're training folks in? So, working with the Sheriff's staff, we actually did a site visit last week, and are looking at expanding the current software, finding additional software that allows that tracking. That tracking will then lead into using other data fields to implement an early intervention system. That is one of my contract issues that I have with you, is developing that, and going back in time, I also noticed that that has always been in the plan, since the first Inspector General was brought on board, is to develop a very robust early intervention system. Working with Sheriff's staff, we're very close to getting that done, very, very close. And they're actually excited about that, because it gives them all kinds of different potential in training and equipment opportunities. And then it's just continuing to follow up on the recommendations that are in the report. UnderSheriff and I now meet regularly to kind of go through the recommendations, so that they aren't waiting for a report to come out, we're actually ongoing, there's ongoing dialogue as to where we are on the recommendations. Like, one of the chief deputies said, he was tired of reading the recommendations, that they were trying to get them out of the report, and I informed him, I was tired of writing the recommendations, so we really are trying to move forward, and trying to push that can down the road a lot faster. So, with that, any questions?
Supervisor Cerner, I had a question, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, I just wanted to publicly thank you, Rick, for the report, all your work since we hired you. I think it's pretty, obviously, it's pretty detailed, and I think very methodical what you, you know, how you're presenting the data. I guess my one question, though, for you, is how are we, how are we letting the public know that we even have an Inspector General, and what your, you know, what your responsibilities are to the board and to the public? The only reason I ask is, I was approached the other day about, by someone that's fairly active in our community, that was under the impression that there was very little oversight in terms of sheriff activities, and had no clue that there was even such thing as an Office of Inspector General, and I took a look at our website while you were speaking, and you know, it's a portal, you can get there, and you can use it in many of the ways that you've explained this afternoon, to submit complaints, or what have you, but is there anything that you think we should be doing differently to better broadcast to our constituents that you exist, and you do what you do?
Yeah, absolutely, we can always do it better along the way. So, one, I can do it better by getting out in the community more, and then also working with your staffs, of all five of you, to identify what community groups, what business groups I can actually go to and present what we do on the Inspector General's office, because it's not just about making complaints, by the way, as well. There's a way to recognize for good work, because too often, we forget that, that, you know, if we push, if we're doing good work, and we do more of it, we have less complaints, is the way I look at it. So, how do we do both, and give feedback to the Sheriff's Department? So, I can get out there more often, and it's going to be word of mouth for the most part, because we do do the web and that stuff. I will tell you that the Sheriff's Department did put a sign up in the jail, if you have complaints, call the Inspector General, and my phone started ringing quite a bit from both jails. So, they're pushing at the jail facilities, the access to the Inspector General's office. Now, it's more important for me to help get out into the community and educate them, so I'll work with your staff, so I can get out more often to do that as well.
Thanks.
Well, Rick, I certainly want to thank you as well, and I think certainly the reviews that we get from time to time on the critical incidents, particularly, you know, those where we have fatalities, that it's important, I think, to know, certainly it takes time to review, but also a meeting with our law enforcement officers, and certainly with the affected family, in the event that that's part of the overall scenario of any given situation, so I appreciate the effort you put into that. I guess I'm curious, and maybe with undersheriff here, too, you might be able to shed a little light on this, is that in the recommendations, as you mentioned, some of these are ongoing in progress, and two in particular, I guess I'd maybe a little more detail, since this is the 2016 report, as to where we've advanced now, that we're three-quarters of the way through 2017, one being the continued evaluation of body-worn cameras, with a goal, obviously, of full field and corrections implementation, and this says in progress, the department's completed field testing, is reviewing the results. And secondly, the 16.14, which is the review of potentially deploying less lethal devices that provide maybe some greater distance between officers and suspects, and reading there just says that they're looking at potentially deployment of less lethal shotguns, and there's a little more description in the report itself. So, I guess I'm curious as to, since the report was issued, from your perspective, what if any progress has been made towards those two items, maybe a status report, and then if undersheriff wants to respond in part of the department, I appreciate it as well, so.
Sure, I'll give it from my perspective, and then let the undersheriff kind of move forward. So, the Sheriff's Department is moving forward in those regards, we have, meeting with the undersheriff, actually brainstormed different ideas on how to get less lethal weapons out there, and with that comes a cost, not only the acquisition of those things, but then you've got training, and training dollars, but I'm, come from a risk management perspective, when I look at these, is you invest now to save potential liability and litigation down the line, and/or injury or death, so it's important to me to kind of continue to push that, and let the undersheriff kind of talk about where they're at.
Okay, good, thanks, Rick. Thanks, Eric, for being here today as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Supervising totally members of the board, thank you for the opportunity, and let me start by just reiterating the appreciation we have for the Inspector General, and the relationship we have. Obviously, he offers a fresh set of eyes for us, and we're able to collaborate and bounce some ideas off one another, and like he said earlier, we meet regularly to talk about issues. With respect to body-worn cameras, we did look at those, we had a field study going back in 2015, and that lasted about a year. At that time, the sheriff was not ready to implement body-worn cameras, however, just recently, we talked about body-worn cameras again. In fact, several days ago, I met with our committee once again, and asked them to kind of freshen up the material that they have, and the information, to start looking at vendors again. We'll be working with county purchasing, because I believe the sheriff is now ready to implement a body-worn camera program. We don't know how that's going to look, whether it's just going to be patrol, whether it's going to be all enforcement units, whether it's going to be corrections as well, but I asked the committee to do their homework and get back to me by January with some recommendations. With respect to less lethal weapons, as Rick mentioned, we looked at several different options, we are in the process of transitioning all of our shotguns to less lethal. Those have all been pulled back, and they're, we're in the process of transitioning those to less lethal weapons. We also looked at 40 millimeters, but ultimately, we feel the shotgun less lethal is a better option for us.
Okay, thanks. Eric, just a, thank you for that update. As relation to the body-worn cameras, obviously, this is up to the sheriff, and certainly you and his staff have looked at very closely. At such time as there's determination made, obviously, it could have a budgetary request behind it, I think it would be good, and I certainly would ask my colleagues away, and if they have different thoughts, but actually maybe have a presentation, at least in general, about what that entails, and you know, how that would be implemented and so forth, because I got to imagine that would be, again, with the training, and just the purchasing, and making sure that there's protocols for all that, and then I know behind that, then it comes, once that information is recorded, then how that is released, and how it's made available for... is released and how it's made available for, in the event that there is a, you know, a crime for prosecution and such. And so, I do think, and I may look at Mr. Gill too, that I think at some juncture, as that comes together, because the sheriff obviously would implement, we would have to authorize the budgetary authority to make the acquisition. But then, in addition to that, then it has all those other things that I think, you know, would fall behind, as I mentioned a moment ago. I think it would be important to have some discussion in these chambers, or at least a presentation about, as we move forward, whatever juncture that is, decided to do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric. Appreciate you being here. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Brazil on the report? If not, Rick, thank you very much, if you mind standing by, please. Okay, Mr. Fritschke, Bruce? We've received your written information, I think it's been distributed, and just introduce yourself, and I'm going to put 10 minutes on the clock, Bruce, once you get started, so.
Roger. Okay, my name is Bruce Fritschke, I spoke before you once before, but I'd like to thank each of you again for my time to speak here again, and hopefully speak with you about my issue. I have a couple of issues that were brought up during the past presentation, and that is, in my particular case, where does my case fit in this data that was displayed by that OIG? And the reason I ask that is because my case has several legs in it, and we're all satisfied that all fit different categories, and were they viewed properly by the Board to be able to make decisions for future decision-making? Second is, while I'm sure Sheriff's Department tries to communicate the best they can, in my case, when the initial use of force investigation was relayed to me, I spoke to Sergeant Pye via phone in our interview, and I didn't hear from him again until I received a letter with his decision. There was no in-between, no counter or chance to address anything that he found with the deputy's investigation. And the third is, one of my first questions was, after my event, was the deputy wearing body camera? And of course, they're not, and in my case, would have made this whole lot easier to present both sides, whether it came in my favor or not, but that equipment would have been very helpful. And the less than lethal equipment, again, that was one of the conversations that the OIG and I had, was, in my case, in a home in Wilton, of a school teacher delivering papers, and unholstering a weapon was a little excessive for that case. Was there anything else the deputy could have thought of if he truly was threatening that case? So again, revisiting use of force would be very good there. Okay, with that, in the documents, I sent the email chain I had with the OIG, and in that chain, I requested the report from the OIG concerning my investigation. And I received the email from him that there was no report to issue, and that he wouldn't send, be sending anything other than his verbal communication. I sent another email to him, and he later sent an email with some codes or statutes as to why he justified not sending the report. I looked up each one of those reports and, or each one of his codes, and they did not pertain to my situation. So I'm here first and foremost to request the Board to understand why I am unable to receive the documents or investigation from my investigation through FOIA, and that has yet to happen. Of all the FOIA requests I sent in, I received only the documents I submitted to the sheriff and to the OIG, not one document organic to the OIG inspection. So I'm here still requesting that, that report with the documents of who we talked to, what they discussed, what came out of that, et cetera. Okay. In my notes that I sent, I listed in there the use of force, and I refer back to the Graham versus Connor case. And there's a standard there that is used when deputies use force. I also submitted the post-training document I found, pages 5 through 30, which also go through quite a few descriptions of use of force. And in the investigation, part of what I was looking for is, if it was based on department policy, the sheriff's decision, what was that policy in relation to this other judgments that are out there? And I would never got that response. My response from the Sheriff's Department is it falls within policy. If that truly is the case, then maybe the policy of the Sheriff's Department with regard to a situation like mine would need to be revisited. And again, that was never presented for either myself or anybody to rebut. I submitted the document for the Public Records Act, which, again, was to help support the request for the information from the OIG, and I also submitted some letters from the Sheriff's Department. And I'm not going to cast dispersions upon their job, because I don't live their job, but in the response I got, I felt it somewhat demeaned my validity in the fact that I truly had a question about what was done, how it was done, and how it was resolved. Any, any thing we do, there'll be mistakes, that occurs. How those mistakes are resolved is the key. Case in point, one of the legs of my case is Officer Tippens was in my mailbox. Now, I don't know, I can't say exactly what he was doing in the mailbox, but that violates federal law. And that, from what I was told, now created or constituted a policy change with the Sheriff's Department. The OIG, or the Sheriff's Department, or the public would not have known that had I pursued my complaint. And making my original call to Sheriff's Department, it was a, there were quite a few gatekeepers that prevented me from getting to someone in the Sheriff's Department to talk about that specific issue. I was persistent, I've been fortunate, I'm persistent, again, I'm still, I'm here this, today too, but how many people are not as persistent as myself and never have their issues truly heard? And if they're not truly heard, can any agency, whether it's the Sheriff's Department or anybody, truly make the changes or be better like the OIG said? And that's for all of us. So without that clear process or that true validity in that, we won't know the things that need to be changed. So there are several things in my case, I'd like to let you ask some questions if you like, but I'm here to present that again to each of you.
Thank you, Bruce, and again, I think you give a pretty comprehensive package, you certainly highlighted in your, in your, in your comments. I guess, just one question, so you had made a Freedom of Information Act request to the Sheriff's Department and to the OIG, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And you, did you receive a response? I'm just trying to look through the documents here.
The response I received was, it was, I did receive a packet, and that was full of the documents I submitted.
Okay, okay, so it was, and you've said that to me before, that she just returned, the documents were returned to you that you had submitted?
Yes.
And, just the other, not so much a question, I think to your comment that I, and that's part of, certainly the basis of having an Inspector General, but certainly have a process for folks to make complaints and for us to validate it, them or not, and secondly, though, probably most importantly, to your point, to hopefully use that as a tool for improvement, certainly to commend folks when appropriate, but also to, you know, help us pursue excellence in, you know, what we do, and certainly in the law enforcement, really that's very important, and I think Sheriff, Sheriff Magnus is present here, they obviously, they're very interested in that as well. And so, I do think that, to your point about being persistent, not everyone is, you know, that persistent or perseverer in their effort, but I think it's important for folks to know, one, that they can make a complaint, that they can then get some determination, again, if appropriate, and if they're unfounded, then maybe they don't get any response to that, but I, I think your point's well made there, and hopefully that, again, some of the improvements have come out of your situation, and I understand your frustration, you've certainly shared that with me in conversations and in correspondence about this. I guess, if I could just maybe boil it down then, Bruce, appreciate you being here today and your patience as we schedule this, and certainly have communicated with the OIG, make sure we did it on the same day. The, is there, kind of a bottom line request here before the Board today, so I guess you were asking us to weigh in, because you detached this, I think you verbally have stated your concerns, is there, now recognizing where some time passed when the incident occurred, you know, nearly two years and a couple of months now, is there something that, kind of a bottom line request beyond kind of what your statement was?
No, I'd still like the, the OIG report, specific to my totality of the investigation, to, again, refer back to comparison of what the Sheriff's Department claimed are used as policy, and compare that with what is known or out there. Another thing too is, the LA Inspector, LIIG report, page three includes quite a verbiage about transparency. And again, not that we're Los Angeles, but in the development of any process, taking what's good in others and using it in your own, that was a very good section that could be utilized with Sacramento. The other thing too, with your community member who mentioned to you, I, I believe that somebody with knowledge of the community, non-law enforcement, would be a good addition to the OIG as part of that grouping, to help give that balance on both sides, would be a recommendation I'd provide to the Board to supplement.
Okay, very good. Well, again, thank you for your comments, I don't know if there's any other questions, but Bruce, thank you so much for being here. And Rick, I don't know if there's anything you want to offer in response, I guess, at this point, is there any?
Unless you have one.
Okay. All right. Then with that, thank you, Bruce, thank you, Rick. Was there any other member of the public that wished to address the Board on the OIG annual report? All right, seeing none, and then, I think this was very good, Mr. County Executive, I think this was helpful, and I think it's a good, a good protocol to follow to annually have this presented to the Board, so. And thank you, Under Sheriff, for being here. So this is a receiving, receiving file, and we'll do that and move on to the next item. Thank you very much, thanks, Rick. Thank you, David, for your help on the technical stuff as well, so. Okay.
Okay, item 54, authority to enter into an agreement with First Step Communities in the amount of $435,000 for operation of the Winter Sanctuary Program effective October 17th through April 30th, 2018.
Okay, I just, I would note I have one speaker signed over, there are others who want to speak on this item, you need to get your speaker form in after Ms. Edwards makes the presentation, so, okay, Anne.
Good afternoon, Chair Nattoli and Board members, Anne Edwards, Department of Human Assistance. As you know, during the harsh winter months, the need for shelter for our homeless residents exceeds existing inventory. The Winter Sanctuary Program has been providing an additional 100 beds for those unable to receive shelter through our other programs. The Winter Sanctuary is designed to provide a warm, safe place to sleep and two meals for vulnerable residents during the cold and wet winter months. DHA has funded winter shelter for many years, using both a single-site model and a rotating shelter model. Since 2010, DHA has collaborated with Sacramento Steps Forward and the faith-based community to provide these services. Sacramento Steps Forward contracted this service out to First Step's community, and in order to maximize funding for the program, DHA took the lead in procuring, operating, and managing the contract for these services. So on July 31st of this year, we released an RFP for the Winter Sanctuary Program, seeking an agency that could provide project management, coordination, and transportation to and from the Winter Sanctuary intake and shelter sites. First Step's Communities was the sole submission and demonstrated they had the knowledge and experience to fulfill the program requirements successfully. Although not requested, First Step Communities' proposal included multiple service delivery options, which were the current or previous faith-based community rotating site model, which we have done in the last number of years. They also proposed a single-site facility operating 24/7. First Step Communities indicated in the proposal that a site had been secured and the additional funding needed to operate the model had also been secured. Staff recognized the advantages of a single-site facility operating 24/7 and explored the possibility of this option first. First Step's Communities did not initially share the site information or who would provide the additional funds, and we were later advised that the City of Sacramento was involved with the single-site facility and had written a letter of intent to provide additional funding to run the Winter Sanctuary. So, we were still committed to seeing if we could make a single-site model work, which is why we pulled this item off of your agenda on September 26th and rescheduled it for today to allow more time to really fully flesh out whether or not a single-site option was viable. Several meetings occurred over the course of the month, and we still did not have a secured site or the additional funding. The site under consideration was the same site proposed for the city's 150-bed winter shelter. So on September 27th, we determined that there was not adequate time to overcome the challenges in the single-site option in order to be operational by November, which is really key, because come November, we're going to have wet and cold weather. Therefore, we are pursuing the traditional faith-based model. Shortly after deciding on the faith-based model, First Step Communities let the county know that the $435,000 wasn't enough to fully fund that option either. They've indicated that they're about $150,000 short as a result of the increased costs for RT, which provides the transportation, and some increase in staff and wages, and some additional support services. So we're continuing to have conversations with them about how we can address this. Initially, First Step Communities indicated that they would do some fundraising to raise the difference. And in all fairness, I do believe that they were really thinking that the single-site option was going to work, the $150,000 would come from the city, and we would have a site and the funding, and neither of those have yet materialized. So at this time, the Winter Sanctuary budget of $435,000 will allow them to run the program through the end of February, with, which is a month less than usual, we usually go through March. So I'm recommending that we proceed with the contract with First Step Communities for $435,000 and work with them to either and/or address the shortfall and come up with some additional funding options. I'll be looking internally at my budget to see if there's any additional savings that we can find, but in order to get this operational in November, I am recommending that we proceed with the $435,000 and then continue to work with First Step Communities on the gap.
Thanks for your presentation. And I do have a question on, on that piece, because it was noticeable in the staff report, and maybe because the time this was submitted, you were still working on it, but it wasn't the start date nor the end date, and, but in a conversation with First Step Communities, you know, I think what you just pointed out in, including your staff report, was is that, you know, with the current amount of money, that we might get 12 weeks out of that, maybe a little more, but we weren't going to get 20 weeks, and we've had, pretty much from November 15th, give or take, through the end of March, has been the dates we've had in, you know, Winter Sanctuary now for at least a decade, if not longer, and granted, the funding challenge obviously is, you know, is, is key to that, but, you know, nowhere in the staff report did it say that, what you just said, and...
Correct. By the time we submitted the staff report, we weren't aware that it was as big of a gap and that...
So, when will we, if we authorize this today, I'm going to get back to my question about the end date, what is the start date? It is before Thanksgiving, you're going to start the week before Thanksgiving?
We're going to start on November 20th, so, yes.
Okay.
Which is right around the time we generally start.
Right, November 15th, November 20th.
Yes.
And, and I understand about the fundraising piece of it and so forth, but I guess I, I for one, again, I want to get it up and running, so certainly, I don't want to stand in the way of that action, but, and recognize people may be scrubbing their budgets and so forth, but I think it's, I don't want in any way, at least by this action, send the message that, you know, winter shelter is ending the last day of February, because the funding says so, it may not be, in theory, we're going to do that, but to me, just as you said, it gets rainy and cold as we go into November, and it may be beginning to warm up towards the middle of March and end of March, but it's still rainy, it's still cold, and I think what this does as well is, in acknowledging with the rotating shelter, it, that's 100 folks at any given night that are sheltered, and I think the cost of doing this, you can, you know, try to take 100 into the amount, but when I, when I, you know, in past hearings, we've talked about vouchering people into motels, $80 a night and so forth, you know, at least these conditions, they're, you know, we know that they're sanitary, they're clean, they have welcoming congregations, obviously our staff is working with, you know, First Step Communities in this case, but others to assure that the transportation's provided, you don't have the neighborhood opposition that comes with some proposals at times, and, and so, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to it, and the fact is, there's 100 people that are sheltered at any given night, it may not be exactly 100, but the potential is there to do that, and, and again, none of us, anybody in this room or anybody would want to be out in some of the weather conditions that we have. out in some of the weather conditions that we have throughout the December, January, and February months in particular, but November and March, I think, are good bookends, ones that we've used now for many years. And so, I guess my question boiled down to that is, is that, you know, I know with ability to adapt, you know, budgets, if we see we're getting there, but I think, you know, when people employ, they're also scheduled. That's the other thing, is they're scheduling for the congregations to take the rotation. So I think it's important that we not leave this question open-ended. Certainly, the start is very critical, but the end date, and I guess I would, I'm certainly prepared to have a conversation today about supplementing the budget, if that's appropriate. The item is properly before us. You know, it's not to say that you have to identify the money, but I mean, to me, this is a need that needs to be, have an answer to it, and also should have the funding. And again, if there were some negotiations going, I get it, but my sense was that there wasn't a lot of flex there, otherwise we're just going to get less weeks.
There's not a lot of wiggle room there. I spoke with Bill Nolten, who's on their board. He was here earlier and had, was confused about the time that this was, which is why he's not here now.
Yeah.
And we can probably shave a little bit in terms of savings, but we won't come close to $150,000 without identifying funds.
Right.
So, Board members, I think the strategy we're employing is that we know the sentiment is to go to end of March, so that's pretty clear. If Ms. Edwards continued the dialogue, whatever the mountain is shaved, our commitment is to come back and augment this budget December, January, so that way there's no denigration of services that are being provided. So that's the nature of our recommendation today.
Okay, so, I just think the sooner the better. I mean, we can drag this out, but I think in December, you know, again, gives a little more time, but I would like to see this before we get into the hall, like, because there's a long break in there, and then you're in January, and you're up against it. And if you're, you know, I don't know what the budget picture, how much it's going to change or not, but I guess I'd be of the opinion that we have sufficient funding to do this if we choose to, so.
Understood.
Okay. Mr. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you may have answered the question for me. I was going to ask, how far into the 12th, the 12 weeks of providing the service, should we go before we have some definitive extra action by this board to augment our budget so that we can hit the end-of-March timeframe? In other words, how many, how many weeks advance planning and funding identification should we have in front of us so that we can continue to let all the participating congregations know that their costs are going to be covered and whatnot? Was that, is it December, January? Is that?
I don't think it should be any later than that, for sure, because they can operate through February 28th with the $435,000. That's how far the money goes. So we will need to be back to your board sooner than that in order to ensure that they can continue to operate.
I think, Surprisert, to answer the other way is that the most outside will be the last meeting in January, but it will, has to be the December meetings, January, depending on the work that we're going to finish.
And we have a, we have a commitment, perhaps a soft one, by First Step Communities to actively fundraise, so that presumably their fundraising activity would be to raise additional resources to extend the service through March? Has that commitment been made formally or otherwise?
I haven't, I don't currently have that commitment. It will be part of our ongoing conversations. I think they had originally planned to fundraise and then thought that this other partnership was going to work out, and so they didn't as actively pursue fundraising opportunities, but we will certainly have that conversation between now and when we come back to the board.
Okay, because I think that, quite frankly, that does factor, at least into my calculus about how much we should be talking about in terms of augmentation if we get to that point.
We will have an answer for you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ann. Any other questions of Ms. Edwards? Okay. Do you have Ben Avi? Ben, you signed up on this item? And I don't have anybody else on 54. I have a number on 55. So if somebody else wanted to speak on item 54, certainly call up Ben and talk to him.
Mr. Chair, Supervisors, thank you. First off, I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership on the Winter Sanctuary Program, both on the funding side initially and the conversation that you're having today, and also just on the leadership side of managing the program. As an agency who has done that in the past, it is, it's a tough process, and we appreciate you guys taking that and taking the lead on it. Today, I wanted to come forward and just say, share our support for First Steps in managing this program. They were our subcontractor last year, so they're well aware of how the program operates, and we think that they're going to do a fantastic job. We are voluntarily working with them to make sure that there is no gap in information as they take over the program. For example, we still have congregations that will call us, and so we are making sure to refer them over to them. We're also making sure that they have the ability and training to enter information into the homeless management information system, and we are also providing training to their volunteers to make sure that they have the information education they need to work properly with the community that they serve. That's all I have, but I just wanted to say thank you again for your leadership, and we appreciate you guys looking at how to make sure this program can go towards the end of the coldest lettuce months. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your work as well. Okay, so we have the staff recommendation before us. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second, and then with the understanding, you'll be back to us, because we're looking for March 31st as the date. Okay, if nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item, please.
Item 55, Presentation by Sacramento Area Congregation Together to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I see our Together group coming down, and so I don't know who's going to get the first assignment. It was Mike or others, but we'll do that. We do have the correspondence, and so.
Chair Natoli, Mike Chasky, representing Sacramento Area Congregations Together. You have the packet in front of you, and I'm going to go through it relatively quickly, and I'll be followed by Howard Lawrence and Tina Campbell, Trinity.
Mike, what do you think? 10, 12 minutes? Is that enough?
In that ballpark, sir.
Okay, sure. Okay, I just want to be sure. Okay, good. Thanks.
So, mostly for the benefit of our audience, if you could pull that up. So, the fundamental action we're asking you to take is the same as is in your packet. We request that the Board of Supervisors direct the county executive and management to initiate an assured development of a comprehensive collaborative plan to end homelessness by a set date. And we have ourselves previously proposed 2022 as that date, but that's all part of developing the plan itself. And we recommend that executive management report back to the board no later than November 7th on a specific proposal for how to develop this plan in a collaborative manner, so that it can be available for your review, for public review by the spring This next overhead is verbatim text from our written proposal, and essentially, it outlines our thinking about how the process would work. So it would be guided by the county, the City of Sacramento, and Steps Forward, the three major entities who actually operate homeless programs now. There'd be a steering committee, composed of representatives of a whole series of agencies and interested organizations. And by the way, we inadvertently left out Sacramento Regional Coalition to end homelessness, so count them in the list. That group would work starting as soon as possible and deliver a plan for public review by late January. Perhaps that date's now not feasible, because when this was written was back in August. Once that plan is available, it would be reviewed by the public, by yourselves, and acted upon in the normal way that anything that comes before you for action requires. And ultimately, we would hope that you and the city and Steps Forward could all agree to a common plan that would be used for budget planning, applications for funding to various other organizations, guidance of programs, and coordination of programmatic activities And lastly, this is a list of the elements of a plan that we suggest be the starting point for everyone's thinking. This would be a plan that would spell out specific goals, objectives, and action steps, and the time benchmarks that go along with each of them. There'd be a designation of the funding streams that would commensurate, was commensurate with the scope of each of the action steps. It would spell out who was doing what at the level of city, county, departments, and divisions, et cetera, so it was clear who was responsible. It would spell out how the county, the city, and Steps Forward would coordinate with other entities, in particular, state and federal funding sources, but additional ones who were involved. It would detail the data that would be collected that would guide projections of housing and supportive service needs, and develop the programs and monitor their performance. It would provide for an in-depth assessment of benchmarks, both those missed, as well as those attained, and outline corrective action where appropriate. And there'd be regular public reporting of progress on each major step. There have been plans to end homeless before for our area. They've been plans more like developed and sat on a shelf, and were not attended to. That's not our goal. Our goal is for a plan that at the start seems to fit all of the facts and the expectations, but if things change along the way, it's adapted, it's modified, it's tuned up, and it's paid attention to. You've all expanded your activity in the last year or two. That's great. We greatly appreciate that. The homeless community is better off for it. But those are efforts that are helping homeless, not ending homelessness. The absence of a plan, I think, has shown itself in certain controversies that have been before you the last several months. If you had had a plan, you would have had a better conversation about how to take action on those specific things that were debates before you. It's not too late, so we recommend that you pursue our requests and launch this effort to develop a plan to end homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Next, Howard, and then Tina.
Good afternoon, Supervisors Natoli, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Howard Lawrence, and as you well know, I'm an active member of Sacramento Area Congregations Together. We all know that a crisis exists. The latest point in time count, our own eyes tell us that we're facing a crisis. Far too many in Sacramento are sleeping without shelter, far too many are being dehumanized by homelessness. We believe we can do better, and we believe it takes a full community effort and mobilization to change the status quo. As Mike just said, we recognize that much has been done. The county has worked very hard to establish new programs and set goals, and so has the city. So we recognize and celebrate these decisions. However, we sat through the meeting this morning, and as those documents you received regarding the implementation of the whole person care indicated, there is a need for a common vision and plan to end homelessness in Sacramento. I would like to speak to you from my own personal experience. Back when I actually worked for a living, I actually was pretty much a crisis manager for the California School Employees Association, and I dealt with all the problems that no one else, you know, was able to solve. And a lesson that I learned early and often was that, and always applied, is the need for a clear and shared vision, definable goals, and a method to hold accountable those responsible for each specific task. I want to speak with you about the notion of the perfect being the enemy of the good. We've been in this chamber and heard other chambers, heard people talk about the idea that we need a six-county approach. We need a SECOG-type structure to tackle this problem. We don't disagree with you. Such a structure may make sense, but we can't wait for someday to happen. As stated previously, we're facing a human crisis. We need to collaborate as a community to end this crisis. A plan will give us the tools we need. A comprehensive plan will allow us to have a rational discussion of how many shelter and housing vacancies exist. From that data, we can develop a new housing policy required to meet our needs. We need a roadmap that will build a real and effective safety net in Sacramento. A plan will tell us what is working well and what needs to be changed. A plan can help us guide us out of the wilderness of human suffering that currently exists in our county. So we urge you to accept our recommendation. Let's convene a planning group, and let's work to end homelessness in Sacramento. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Howard. Tina. Good afternoon, Tina.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli and Board members of the Board. My name is Tina Campbell. I am an Episcopal Deacon, a member of Sacramento Act, and a member at Trinity Cathedral. I return again to ask that you not waste this opportunity to work together as a board and with the city to design, to design a comprehensive plan to end homelessness. With increasing public awareness, even outrage, increasing political will, with funding becoming available, this is a time to act. A favorite bit of scripture of mine is from the Book of Proverbs. It reads, "Without a vision, the people perish." I believe every service provider shares a vision for our community, a place with access to meaningful employment, to affordable housing, to job training, to substance abuse treatment, to medical care and mental health services. I believe all of us carry elements of this vision, some of the, some out of a humanistic sense of decency, a moral compass, some of us out of our religious convictions. And I want to remind you that these service providers stand ready to assist and support you in ending homelessness, not by dictating the details of a comprehensive plan, but by offering out of the wealth of the experience and collective wisdom that comes from years of real, hands-on work in the trenches with people who are homeless, hungry, lost, and in need. We stand ready to do the advocacy work with our parishes and our neighborhood associations, our coworkers, and our other public officials. We will use our voices and our principles and our religious convictions, but you are the ones called to create and implement a plan that will knit together our individual efforts and lift up our vision for a community where our residents do not have to wander the streets and the riverbanks and the parks and the freeway underpasses, looking for a safe place to rest their heads. You are the ones called. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Mike, was there anything you want to conclude with? Okay. So that's our presentation. Thank you to Mike and Howard and Tina for that, and we have a number of speakers behind that that wish to address this item, about a half dozen. So, we'll go down to those. Ben Avi, once again, and Bob Erlinbush, and Noel Cameron, first three.
Thank you, Supervisors. Again, Ben Avi with Sacramento Steps Forward. We're neutral on this matter, but I just wanted to come today to share that as one of the parties named in SAC Act's request, to let you know that we are interested in partnering with the county and the city, if you so choose, to work with SAC Act in their request, and want to let you know that. And we actually do have a new data analytics manager coming on board on Monday, so that we can better understand the data that we have and can be a better partner when working with others to potentially developing a plan for the region. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you again, Ben. Okay. Bob Erlinbush, Bob, followed by Noel.
Good afternoon. Bob Erlinbush, the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness. We strongly support this effort. As you may remember, back in about 2014, 2015, Sacramento Steps Forward went through sort of a strategic planning process, a lot of stakeholders. It's a broad brush, not even a plan, but approach. Lot of great ideas, but also a lot of items missing, just specifically including, that strategic plan doesn't say anything about income and employment strategies for people experiencing homelessness. experiencing homelessness, just to use a very specific example. Ryan Luftbarrel said at the moment in 2015 that it was meant to be an organic document. Well, a lot has happened, including this morning, from 2015 to today. The Board of Supervisors has put an incredible amount of funding towards homelessness. The county's developed a set of benchmarks and plans. The city has done the same thing. The bottom line is, how does all this fit together? Now is the time to pull in stakeholders, sort of take a look at the lay of the land, and to have one plan. We've got one city, one county, one crisis. Ideally, it could be a regional approach, but short of that, we need to act now. And we're not talking about a 10-year plan, a five-year plan. As you saw from the presentation from Mike and Howard, that the bottom line is that we need to move expeditiously. We have a crisis on the street that's growing, and now's the time to act. Thank you. And I want to thank ACT specifically for including the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness in the list of stakeholders, so thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Noel Cameraman, followed by Erin Johansson and Darrell Rutherford. Captain.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you for listening. I'm here to speak in support of ACT's proposal for one plan and coordination between the city as well as the county and Sacramento Steps Forward. I've come from a community and a state, and I'm Connecticut, where we were able to make significant strides in regards to the fight against homelessness. Through coordination at multiple levels, whether it was the community level, the regional level, or the statewide level, it makes a big difference to have everybody on board and working together, collaborating and leveraging each other's services. There's a lot of great resources that the county has. There are a lot of great resources that the city has, as well as other stakeholders within the community, nonprofits and faith-based organizations. We have a lot of great resources, but if we use these resources individually and we don't work with each other and we don't leverage what each other is doing, we're not going to achieve nearly the same kind of impact as if we did in a situation where we could work together. What we don't do well, others might do well, and in coordination of those services across the board is going to allow us to achieve a much greater impact as a community. So through this methodology and through leveraging, in Connecticut, we were able to end chronic veterans homelessness. We were able to then end veterans homelessness, and then we were making great strides to end chronic homelessness as a whole. So it can be done. I've seen it be done, and I would really like to see it happen in this community as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Okay, Erin, and then Darrell, and that's the last two speakers. So if anybody else wishes to address the board, please get a speaker for me.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk. I am Erin Johansson. I'm Executive Director at TLCS, and we are Mental Health County Contractor. So I want to thank all of you for all of the money and effort that you put against this issue every day. There is so much effort that has been going on at the county level for years, but we still have an intractable problem. And I've sat in these chambers and listened to all of you talk about how you get calls from your constituents and how angry they're becoming. And so I would just like to add the support from TLCS and other contractors that I talk to and other providers, that we need a plan, that we're all on the same page, that we're all working together. I really applaud the efforts of the faith community for stepping forward with the plan, including things like benchmarks and opportunities for us to course correct when we find that we're going down the wrong path or something's not working, as happened to us in the recent past with the housing crisis. So I just would like to applaud all of your current efforts, all of the efforts that are going on right now, but also ask you to come to the table with the community at large, and let's get one plan together with actual points where we decide when we're doing it right and what we have to do differently. So thank you very much for your time.
Good. Thank you, Erin. Okay, Darrell. Good afternoon, Darrell.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli, Supervisors. Darrell Rutherford, Executive Director of Sacramento Housing Alliance. And again, it's a pleasure being here and speaking to you this afternoon, unfortunately under the circumstances of crisis that we're all trying to wrap our hands around. I don't want you guys for one minute to think what you've heard this afternoon as being any criticism towards the efforts you've put forward. In fact, the work you did with the Boomerang Funds this year showed your leadership within the region, and we do not hesitate to speak to other local governments who could do the similar type effort as you have done. But we do need a coordinated plan. We need one that is going to be very regional, that we have other communities buying into, that are willing to work together, that are going to come together and put together a comprehensive plan that will address this issue head-on. We've seen it in too many other communities. They, you know, they don't have the same resources as Sacramento County has. They don't have the same type of outreach or the services that the community-based organizations provide. You guys can be leaders in this and bring other communities together, not just here in Sacramento County, but throughout the SECOG region. I think this has to be, at some point, turn into a much more comprehensive-ish plan, but we have to start somewhere. And I think a good starting point is to see if the city and the county can work more closely together, along with all the other cities within Sacramento County, to develop something that will really address this issue head-on. You've heard from all of us here today. We all are here willing to roll up our sleeves and get to work on this issue with you. I know others in the community who can help coordinate these types of efforts are also looking for ways to engage in this homelessness crisis. And I think it's a time that we put, you know, a call to action out to folks. I'm not one for like blue-ribbon committees or things like that, but we do need to have something that's more community-driven. We would appreciate having the county's leadership to direct staff to move forward in some of this, to figure out ways that you can find new sources of funding to leverage the development of this plan, but it definitely has to be community-driven as well, and that you have all buy-in from the stakeholders who are going to help bring solutions and solve this crisis. So with that, you guys, thank you very much. Chairman Natoli, thank you again for your commitment to this work and to our event on the 30th. We look forward to having you at our Housing Summit. We know it's going to be a wonderful conversation, and I hope to see other supervisors there as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Darrell. Okay, anyone else wish to address the board on this? That was all the speakers I had, so, all right. If not, then I'll bring you back to the board for conversation. We have a request before us, again, the presentation, and so certainly hear from colleagues on this. If not, maybe I'll just weigh in then. I did have the chance to attend the Area Congregations Together community meeting and certainly heard some of the presentation you heard today from Mr. Dasky and Tina and others on this. I think that it poses, you know, I think, an interesting question in light of our discussion earlier today, and certainly we had a moment ago with winter shelter. And I know that at least a couple of us, board members, were here when we did the last plan to, at that time was designed to end homelessness over a 10-year period, and some of those recommendations went a ways towards helping address the issue. Obviously, the funding patterns have changed. The need continues to grow. And I guess I would just pose the question that, again, without getting into some drawn-out, you know, multi-tens of thousands of dollars of study and so forth, but I do think that, you know, having a plan where we have some general agreement, not just amongst the city and county, but the cities in the county, and maybe others would join in, but to, I think, continue to bring focus in a way that allows us to track that. We have the county initiatives. We've devoted a lot of time and effort to that. Obviously, those are in the works, what we do on a daily basis in this county and have for decades now certainly has great value in helping some of the neediest among us. But in light of, I think, some of the things that we continue to see that are very visible, but also recognizing the time we spent in these chambers talking about this and related issues, it would seem to me that, you know, I'm more comprehensive, not that, you know, coordination and collaboration isn't our words that we don't really adhere to because we do, but I think there's a way to maybe pull it together and obviously with some of the folks in the audience to, you know, get their additional input on this. And so I certainly would be willing to just entertain having our county executive take a look at this and talk about what sort of framework it might entail and not deter us from any other efforts that we might make and are currently undertaking, recognizing that there's only so much staff time available. So I certainly would be willing to entertain the idea and get some feedback on that. So I have Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Serna.
I appreciate that there are so many people in the region that care about our community and the homeless, and want you all to know that the county is working hard over the past many years to address the homeless issues. And in fact, in the last budget cycle, approved $12.2 million, additional dollars toward homeless initiatives that were carefully thought out to serve in those areas where we felt like we might have a better impact on homelessness. So I feel like the region is asking the county to come up with a, to join them in putting together a plan. The county has worked very hard and has a plan, and we've already been approached by the city of Sacramento to see if we can find ways to either find extra resources or reallocate our resources and change our plan in order to partner with Sacramento. We have not, to my knowledge, received those requests from the other cities in the region who are also having an impact due to homelessness. But what I do want to talk about is that the county and the city are in a special situation. We're surrounded by other counties and cities who are actually reducing their homeless counts and having some very positive experiences. And we have some unintended consequence in relation to a lawsuit, I guess, in 2010 that requires us to give our homeless more time and requires us to establish a protocol that's different than all the people around us. And so we have some situations that we're looking at, at the county, that could potentially be impacting, you know, Sacramento City and the county and causing us to have this problem that we have. So I don't know. My question to Cindy Kavanaugh and to Nav is, how many partnerships can we have and do we have the staff resources to look at all these other plans? We have all these people coming at us with different plans that...
A fair question. And I think the way I'll answer that is that, and I'm going to ask Paul and Cindy to help me, we do have No Place Like Home. The whole planning process and committees that we've set up, I'm going to ask Paul to walk us through. I understand the request might be a little bit different than what No Place Like Home's trying to get at, so we're spending efforts on that, and we're also spending efforts on our initiatives that the board ended up approving. If the board desires for us to do this, it will divert our attention from what we've been focused on. But if that's what the board is, we'll come back with additional resources whenever we need to accommodate that. What I will come back to is that I think there might be a segue from No Place Like Home, and I want to look at Paul or Cindy to help me with that, is that maybe we can get to some of the ask we're getting this afternoon through that process. Paul?
Yeah, if I may, much of what ACT is asking for is going to be incorporated into the plan that we're going to be putting together. As the board knows, the No Place Like Home application, first and foremost, requires us to present a board-approved homeless plan in order to even apply for the No Place Like Home funds. So we're in the process of hiring a consultant, putting out an RFP to hire a consultant to help us prepare that plan. That consultant's job will be to do a lot of outreach to the, to community groups, to involve all the folks that are here, plus others, in that process. And we will, as Nav mentioned, we have a No Place Like Home committee structure in place that we are planning to expand to include many of the groups that ACT is asking to be part of that process so that they can assist us in the development of the process and the development of that plan. The state hasn't, has yet to award the technical assistance money to us that we are anticipating to use to pay this consultant. We're hopeful that we're going to hear from them at any point in time so that we can proceed with getting that consultant on board. So with that, we would anticipate completion of that plan, you know, sometimes late spring, early summer, given the timeframe that we have for getting that money and getting things and getting things moving. We will include all of the cities. This is more than just one county, one city. It's one county, seven cities, and we'll make sure that we include all of them in that process. So I would encourage that we could sit down and explain that process to folks, but encourage the board to, you know, let us, let us proceed with the development of the plan for No Place Like Home, and we use that as our, as our plan for going forward, above and beyond No Place Like Home, but where we're going with addressing the homeless problem.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I guess I'll start by saying that I guess I share a sentiment similar to the chair, and not opposed to a plan, but I will tell you, what I am opposed to, and that is reinventing the wheel, any revisionist history. Tenure plan has been mentioned several times already. I'm not interested in plans that collect dust either, and I'm also not interested in diverting staff resources, fiscal resources away from what's already been set in motion. And what's been set in motion is evolving on an hourly basis. We are, you know, I hate to say it, but in some respects, yeah, we're building the plane while it's in flight. And we're doing that because of the fact that everyone can agree that the impact, both the human and the social impacts associated with homelessness are acute, and we have all kinds of ways to measure it, whether it's a point in time or just our daily drives to and from work. We see it during our lunch hours. We understand it. That, you know, understanding how acute the problem is, is not the problem. I think figuring out how best to rightly use scarce resources to have an efficacy that we all want to address both the human and the social tolls of homelessness is what we also can agree on. So, you know, I think that, as it relates specifically to the city of Sacramento, yeah, there's been a ton of activity in recent months. A lot of that has to do with the fact that there's new, relatively new leadership at the city in the form of a mayor that is obviously very passionate about the subject. There's already been a lot of activity this winter, spring, and summer in both jurisdictions. What I would suggest we do, instead of reinventing the wheel, instead of potentially taxing even more so limited staff availability to delve into substantive interventions to address the subject, is not necessarily follow the recipe with all due respect to ACT that they've presented, which is a very specific recipe of what a plan constitutes, but we have a lot of moving parts right now, both at the county and the city, whether it be full-service shelter, triage, winter sanctuary, possibly even more of the, you know, winter inclement weather respite centers, whatever it might be. There's a lot of moving parts. We still have resolution one way or another on whole-person care and how Mental Health Services Act funding may or may not play into that. Is, what I would suggest is at the right time, and perhaps it's, you know, maybe around the beginning of the calendar year, we sit down with the appropriate folks, our homeless services coordinator, the city's homeless services coordinator, our executive staff, and begin to kind of reverse engineer all the activity that's occurred within, by that time, over the course of a year to coordinate that. So moving forward in terms of implementation, because we're going to be in, both the city and county are going to be much more, hopefully, in an implementation mode in 2018, calendar year 2018 than we were in 2017. We spent a lot of 2017... We spent a lot of 2017 trying to appropriate resources and, you know, plan on the fly, so to speak, what we want to do in the not-so-distant future. But I would suggest that we kind of reverse engineer it, take a look back, take inventory of what both agencies, both local governments are doing, and of course coordinate that. That should go without saying. We shouldn't have to say, "Go coordinate." That should be obvious to everyone that it's in everyone's best interest to do that. So I would like to suggest respectfully that come January, beginning of the year, that that occur. By then, we'll be much more informed about what the status of whole person care and whether or not that's implementable, whether or not the funding's available, whether it's Mental Health Services Act funding or other funding is available to implement that, and then move forward with that coordinated effort. And if we want to call it a plan, that's, that's fine. Let's call it a plan. But again, I'm just, and I'm a planner. I come from a planning background. Now, it was urban planning, but it wasn't, wasn't planning homeless policy and resource allocation. But so I have an appreciation for the value of planning. But I also, as was mentioned several times by the speakers today, have an appreciation for the immediacy and the fact that we have to do something about this now. The call to action that this board made a year and a half ago was, I think rightly referenced, as not being satisfied with the status quo at that point, because we didn't have to wait for a winter. It was in fact after, you know, the summer, the summer months, that it was registering in all of our offices that we had to do something different. And we, you know what? I'm really proud of the fact that we actually responded in fairly short order. And we did it with public involvement. We didn't do it without, I think, appropriate forethought. It took some time. It took, over the course of a few months, to vet that. And then we spent this past winter drilling down deeper on the details of what it is we wanted to accomplish and how we wanted to do it, enter the city, enter a passionate mayor on the subject. We were able to adjust. We did things like have a, you know, a first-of-its-kind hearing with county board members and city council, unanimous votes on reprioritizing housing vouchers. And as recently, again, as this morning, you saw, I think, some very constructive conversation here in exchange with folks at the podium about perhaps a next step in the form of whole person care. So I, I just really caution all of us not to interrupt the momentum that we have, and let's, let's really capitalize on it.
Supervisor Peters?
Yeah, thank you. I would look at this as duplicating efforts that are already going on. And to address Phil's comments about planning, it's, I don't know that we could catch up because it is moving so fast. And staff is stretched really thin and coming up with another plan on top of the plan we already have and the one that's evolving, I think, would be redundant. And I wasn't sure, sometimes, Paul, it's hard to hear you on that microphone, on the No Place Like Home requires a plan.
Yes.
It includes all the cities. And did you say there's a way to talk to interested parties that are here today?
Yes, absolutely. We'll include them in the process as well as the outreach.
So that is a way that you could be informed about what's going on and make comments. So that would, that would be my suggestion.
I just have one question after hearing Paul's explanation. I'm certainly familiar with that, No Place Like Home. But is there the opportunity, I mean, that's focused to some degree. You're waiting for planning monies. We've been waiting for planning monies. But it would seem to me that in light of the request, without getting caught up, you know, necessarily in doing something different, that you could actually have a little broader definition around that plan. And if we wanted to dedicate either additional resources and/or effort to that, to, I think, bring into focus more so than just No Place Like Home and all its variety of components, I think some of what's being requested here. So I guess I'd like to have a response on that because I saw the committee, but I know with the focus. I read the, you know, the staff reports you brought to us sometime earlier this year. And it is not, it has some flexibility, but it's fairly precise in what to, what to look at. It is, it is not as broad as I think it's some of the suggestions here. So I guess, Paul, I'd like to have some...
The, the plan that we have to submit to No Place Like Home is not just how are you going to implement No Place Like Home. It is what is the broader strategies that the county is engaging in to address the issue of homelessness. So it can be, it can be pretty broad. And I think the expectation is that it goes beyond just No Place Like Home and would incorporate many of the, the components that ACT has presented today and many of the components we would all expect to be in any kind of a homeless plan.
And so just one follow-on question then. So is that, does that come out the outline that was submitted relative to our request for the funding? Or is that something that you could get some additional guidance, direction from this board around so that we can be sure, in addition to what you've already said you think you're going to incorporate? Because this has been part of the conversation we keep having. That's why we had the discussion we had this morning, is because there's been, you know, some direction around that, but also, you know, the back and forth between staff and what you think we may be channeling to you, but haven't said or have said, but it's only one of us. So I guess I'd like to be curious about what sort of touchback. Cindy, you came up very quickly, so...
Yeah, thank you. Cindy Kavanaugh, Director of Homeless Initiatives. I think all of the points are part of the conversation and struggle with a plan. I clearly remember when I was hired, action, action-oriented initiatives. At the same time, we can recognize that planning, understanding relationships is an ongoing important task. So we have, are working on the required plan from No Place Like Home. It has many of the same elements that were mentioned in the ACT, looking at what resources we have, which resources should we seek, what are the existing investments, what are the results of those investments, what are the gaps, or what could we improve? Yes, we did a lot of that work in the last fall as we came up with the initiatives, but that can be an ongoing conversation and look. So it's, it's a comprehensive plan with flexibility. I think we should use it reflective of, definitely of the board's interest to make it something useful for us. That is our intent. And we have convened a initial conversation with the cities, with Sacramento Steps Forward, with the existing No Place Like Home Work Plan Committee to start that conversation. What is the most useful thing this plan can do? We've talked about the lack of ongoing data to really not only understand the need, but also understand the impact of our investments. That might be something this plan could really promote. How do we get ongoing data for decision-making? So we're not just basing it on driving through the neighborhood. So those are, that's an example of the, of how we can make this plan useful. And we will be seeking either through staff or through the consultant, multitude of opinions, of opinions on how to make that plan useful, including from board members.
And also as a reminder, Cindy, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but that plan has to be submitted to our board, and it's going to be your approval at the end that we'll submit. So all the work we're going to do, we're going to be back in this forum to have that open dialogue, as Supervisor Serna said, we've been doing all year. So we'll be back to you with that.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
We have been, we have quarterly meetings set up with all the cities as well, right? So we're already collaborating with all the cities.
It will just be a matter of reflecting in a plan in a written document, those ongoing efforts that, that we are, yes, deeply involved in.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? I guess my sense is still falls a little short of the request here, but yeah, I would maybe encourage us to, you know, have that, not just a dialogue, obviously, but I think, you know, to get a better sense, they laid it out in outline of, as we're going forward on No Place Like Home and that planning process, how that would, to Cindy's comment says, how that dovetails, how you can need to expand upon that, but include that. Because only if it comes back to us, I can see us being a day here, we're all, all the way down that track, and people are saying, "Well, it's only part of a plan." So I just think it's, you know, it may serve everybody's well, including those that we're trying to help, to, you know, try to get it as wide as we can with accordance with people's abilities and desires to see the plan. So, okay. I thank all of you being here. This was a presentation, and you've heard the conversation. Unless there's any further direction on items, then we'll move to close of the agenda. Is there any other items coming for us?
I don't have anything else.
Oh? There is?
I don't have any, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right. I know we have a couple of adjournments. And so Supervisor Frost, you punched up.
I just wanted to congratulate the city of Folsom for the opening of the Johnny Cash Trail the other day. That was an exciting event, and it was exciting to spend a little bit of time with Cindy Cash, who shared a little bit about her father and the real Johnny Cash, and how the artist captured who he is. He didn't wear cowboy hats, and he didn't ride horses. And they're going to have a 6.2-mile trail that you can ride your bike on or walk that is, that has stations that feature some wonderful art and history of his life. So we're all really excited about that, and it was an honor to be able to represent the county in supporting that. And I also wanted to, I also wanted to mention that I attended an event the other night, the Celebration of Hope, and there were several county employees who were honored there. And I wanted to acknowledge you, Nav, and Sherry Heller, and, but in particular, the Champion of Hope Award was awarded to Michelle Gallegos.
Yes.
Our Deputy Director of Child Protective Services. We had a couple of other awards. Guardian of Hope for Sandra Gomez in CPS, Melissa Lloyd CPS, Tracy Lee, Assistant County Council, got the Children's Hope Award. And, and a couple of our CHPD in Citrus Heights were also honored with the Guardian of Hope. But what I wanted to, to mention was it was the first time I've ever heard of someone referring to Child Protective Services as they helped me keep, save my family. They kept my family together. They weren't there to tear us apart. And I think that is a tribute to our county employees and the fact that their heart is in their work, and they really are trying to help families. And what's really neat is that they changed the way, it's shifting. Something is shifting in the way our communities are looking at our Child Protective Services, and I attribute that to the good work of the staff. And I want to thank you for your leadership and Sherry Heller's leadership and all, all of our staff in Child Protective Services and our county council for their heart. They have heart. And so that was exciting to be a part of it, and I was, I was, felt really proud.
Supervisor Frost, the other individual that's done a lot in that field is Paul Lake.
Paul Lake.
He's shown a lot of leadership in that.
Well, it, it's showing in the community, and I just wanted you to know that it, it meant a lot to me as a representative to, to get that kind of feedback, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Just very briefly, because I know that we're planning to have a formal resolution, a presentation in a not-too-distant board hearing, but we had a very successful ribbon-cutting and modern-day barn raising of sorts this past weekend at Jack Davis Park, which is a small parklet that it's owned and managed by the Southgate Recreation Parks District in the South Oak Park, Fruitridge Pocket neighborhood. This was a collaborative effort involving too many parties to cite today. And again, we're going to do that appropriately so by resolution in the coming weeks. But I want to extend my special thanks to our Chair, Supervisor Ntoly, for, for being there. We had about 200 volunteers to build a kaboom playground. And then it was also the, we also celebrated the completion of a full-court basketball court, replacing a half-court basketball court that was essentially managed and donated by the Sacramento Kings Foundation. So it was a great day for that part of District One in Sacramento County.
Very nice day. Okay. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Marge Reed. If you were looking to buy or sell a home in Sacramento County over the past very many years, chances are you probably came into contact with Realtor extraordinaire Marjorie Reed, who passed away earlier this month at age 90. I know I had an experience with her buying my first house, and I'll just say I learned a lot. She was a pioneering Sacramento Realtor, a woman who made, was an incomparable dealmaker and devoted to the betterment of our community. A native Sacramento, she married Don Reed, her junior high school sweetheart, in 1947, and became active in the community. She organized the inception of Fairy Tale Town, served on advisory committee for UC Davis Medical Center, and was a sustaining member of the Junior League. I didn't see in the paper how many houses she sold, but it has to be countless over the course of a 48-year career. And for 43 of those years, she worked with Lyon Real Estate, where she was Senior Vice President and a life member of the Masters Club. And in 2012, Marge left Lyon to start a family brokerage with her daughter and son-in-law called Reed &amp; Price. She worked well into her 90th year, and it won't be the same not seeing her name on a sign post as a Realtor to call concerning a Reed &amp; Price listing. With that, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of Marjorie Reed.
Okay. Thank you, Susan and Sheri. We will adjourn just a moment in memory of Marjorie Reed. Just a quick question of Mr. Gill on another matter. So I'd share with you correspondence again received this afternoon relative to scheduling of the bingo ordinance, and we last understood that was going to be the 31st of October. Is that the case? Is there some anxiety?
I've not received a confirmation at this point. We had a question at the sheriff's office and budgets looking into it, but...
Well, you'll convey that, that needs to get scheduled though shortly.
Yeah, but I will convey to the board the date, and then we'll have that.
Okay. But it'll be shortly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And would just note too, as Supervisor Serna's punched up again, I just wanted to offer my congratulations for his leadership, certainly in working on project. It was a great day in Oak Park and Fruitridge neighborhood. And again, a lot to celebrate, and they'll be enjoying that for many generations to come, I trust. Anyway, Mr. Serna?
Yeah, Ms. Chair, with all due respect, I wasn't sure if you were planning on saying anything or not, but I think Bear's mentioning that in the spirit of the adjournment, the one adjournment that Supervisor Peters has issued, we might also too want to just acknowledge the fact that we've had a tremendous tragedy occur over the last couple of weeks to our west and our sister counties, Napa and Sonoma, other places in Northern California that have endured a tremendous amount of hardship due to wildfires. And so I respectfully ask that maybe we add that to our thoughts as we adjourn today's meeting.
Very good. And yeah, so noted, we had for those in Sonoma, Napa, Butte, and other counties, a tragedy, loss of life, and obviously tremendous, tremendous impact on those communities. So with that being noted, as I noted this morning, we will also adjourn in addition to Marjorie Reed and to our fellow Californians in fire ravaged areas, but also Private First Class Alex Perella and First Lieutenant Ken Bellard. And so with that, unless there's anything else that comes to body, we will adjourn in memory of those folks, and certainly our thoughts and prayers go with those families as well.